223rd regular meeting at 6:30 via WebEx. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council and GCTV-15. Any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call of members?
Yes ma'am. Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Vice President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Herschel?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
President Rickett?
Present.
Counselor Stumpel Ray? I don't see that she has logged in yet, and the office was notified earlier today that Counselors Lynn, Mayo, and Forgie will not be attending this evening's meeting. Madam President, you do have a quorum.
What's wrong with that?
Who is speaking? GCTV? GCTV, I think he's muted himself. So, I will try to keep an eye on when Counselor Stumpel Ray joins the meeting and let everyone know. But there is a quorum, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'm here as well. This is Counselor Wheeler.
Hello, yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Wheeler, I completely skipped over you, my apologies.
My God. You give it to her, oh. All right. All right, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, this is totally voluntary, okay? A pledge of allegiance to the United States. To the Republic, what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, created, justice for all.
President Rickett?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray has joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, I accept the motion to approve the October 20th City Council meeting.
So moved, Jarvis.
Second to Delmar.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Communications from the Superintendent Schools and the School Committee, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. I'd like to start by sharing a wonderful announcement that Rory Cronin Townsend, one of our high school students, has been named as the recipient for the Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award for 2021-2022. Mr. Cavalo and I were able to surprise her with flowers and a balloon in one of her classes, and she was surprised, I think it's safe to say, but he and I will have the pleasure of joining her family on December 3rd, 2nd, for a dinner where she will be presented with the award, and I will share the nomination that led me to name her as the award recipient. So that's excellent happening this week in the schools. I'd also like to provide an update that earlier this year, we had a challenge with some changes in our elective specials' schedules, which resulted in band and instrument lessons not being available at the elementary, but following that, we were able to hire a full-time band instrument teacher, and we now have 54 4th grade students that have signed up and have started taking lessons, and I was at Four Corners today and saw a few young ladies heading off for their flute lesson, very excited to be doing their music lessons, so also another wonderful accomplishment for the students this year. Certainly, we would be remiss if we didn't provide some information about what's been happening with some of the challenging behaviors at the high school primarily, but also some of our middle school. I did provide an update at the School Committee meeting, which is online, but just to review some of the highlights with you. We have added staff at our high school, we're very happy that we've added our second Associate Principal. So she has joined us, which was fantastic, we have an additional School Adjustment Counselor that started this past Monday. We have posted for a number of additional positions as well, and I actually am participating in a Department of Education group, sort of collective work with some staffing groups that we can try to gather additional applicants for some of our positions. I actually am interviewing a staff person tomorrow that we're hoping to bring on as an additional resource for some of our students who are struggling. So those positions are either pending or have already started. We have the Restorative Practice Facilitator, which Mr. Pratt, our interim Middle School Assistant Principal fills, and we will be posting positions for staff to write our social-emotional learning curriculum, to establish positive expectations and help our students work on self-management, self-awareness, good decision-making, and at this point really increasing their understanding of how their behavior and emotions affect them and others around them. We are updating and revamping some of our special education programs, primarily at the high school, a good chunk of that work occurred already at the middle school, and that work is in process, we are hoping to be able to have our revamped special education program, supporting students after the change in semester. So, we also are providing some support for our Assistant Principals in writing safety and support plans for students who either are having significant anxiety, are having transition issues back into school, so that they know who they can access as resources. We are utilizing progressive discipline, which certainly is appropriate when necessary, but we're trying very hard to pair that with access to supports, and in some cases, a variety of options for students who are not finding success at Greenfield High School right now. So we want to support all of our students in making good choices and accessing their high school diplomas, so that they can move on and have a variety of options after high school. At our middle school, we also have
Superintendent, I'm so sorry, I inadvertently just muted you by accident.
Well, I unmuted myself, so you have to let me finish what I was saying now.
I apologize.
That is
She has a lot of power.
And you noticed how it was wielded to make me stop talking, so. So anyway.
Now I'm here.
I forgot where we were. Oh, there was a rumor that I've been hearing that our entire 5th grade staff has resigned, that is not accurate, we have had a number of transitions, most of which were due to medical, some anticipated, some not, but Ms. Dol is working diligently and has secured some permanent staffing for us to address any of the vacancies, so, you know, we're pleased that we're moving along in that regard. And again, hitting the highlights here are, the other thing, I have been able to meet with the Police Chief, Chief Haig and I had a very good conversation and are planning a variety of steps, so that we can grow and strengthen our relationship between the two departments, and the first step will be that he will visit our schools with me, we are playing email tag to schedule some dates for that, and then he and I and our administrators will be meeting to talk about the role of the Police Department, what resources that they may have available, what supports they can offer, so that we all are working under the same belief when we are looking to each other for resources and support. So, you know, we also have a connection made to start providing trauma-informed care primarily to our middle school staff, they asked for training in how to support students after trauma, they believe that that will help especially our 5th grade students transition back into a formal educational structure, especially at a transition year, and then Mr. Cavalo and I are working on some expanded training for our high school around issues of racial equity. So there are a number of things in motion that we believe will support our students who are having social, emotional, mental health, and behavioral issues, to try to re-regulate. The positive is that our elementary schools appear to be doing typical school, and I'm very pleased that I was able to spend time at Four Corners today, and was reminded that, you know, 4th grade math can be pretty challenging, but they were doing a great job, very engaged in their learning, we got to listen, Mr. Browning and I got to listen to some 4th graders reading aloud, and their teacher then records that and sends it to their families, so that they can see what a nice job they've done reading aloud to their classmates, so. So that's it for me.
No, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for their superintendent or comments? Counselor Jarvis?
Very good, thank you. Superintendent, I would like to request, could I get, or my feelings is that I want to be a little bit more informed via, maybe via email about the issues at the high school and the middle school, I'm getting lots of emails from concerned parents, as I'm sure that you have been, you have, and you may not have time to go in-depth with it tonight, but I would appreciate an email to myself, I don't know how other counselors feel, if they would like one too, but I would like to have, I'd like to have a more in-depth explanation about what's going on. I know tonight was just an overview, but one way or another, either in person or an email, or however you would like to do it, would satisfy me.
I will reach out to you by the end of this week and see if we can figure something out.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Disorder?
Dr. Barz, I watched the School Committee meeting last week, and I just wanted to say your concern for the students was quite apparent, it was overwhelming to see how many people were there, and also who offered to step up and help with anything, and and on a happy note, I just wanted to tell you that the Greenfield High School Band sounded absolutely marvelous on Veterans Day, thank you.
Thank you, and that message is being shared with Matt, our band director, so that's very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Hello Christine, I just, the last time we met in this forum, I asked some pretty tough questions about the schools, questions that maybe some weren't ready to hear, whatever, but I just wanted to circle back with you, in four weeks, you have done many different things, and the few that I want to highlight, it's, A, you've been transparent, and you've worked with the School Committee and the Council and the public to, I think we're going through that healing section of like, we're talking about what's going on, what everyone's going through, you forge relationships across parents, students, the Council, other department heads, and you've thought holistically about not what, as adults and parents, we can easily say, we need this, this, this in the schools, but you've really thought holistically to ask the students what they need, and for that, I want to commend you, because a lot of times we forget who our constituent is, and our constituent here in this situation is definitely the students, and so I just want to applaud you and acknowledge that a lot of this you inherited, and I'm just so grateful that you are here in Greenfield, and that we are here to support you, and just thank you for ramping up so quickly, because I remember the first question I asked you was on communication, so then now here we are, and you even ramped up communication so quickly, so I just want to thank you for that and to keep the conversation going, and I just keep telling, I'm here for you to support you in any way that I can.
Thank you, and we will continue to add layers and to improve the supports and the communication, as you said, the students are stakeholders in this, and, you know, there are some other things certainly that we're working on, I didn't get into, but some of that is ensuring that our students know how to access all of their resources, so we're talking about improving their knowledge about where their resources are, so, you know, as adults, we say, of course, we know you have this, you have this, you have this, but ensuring that we're communicating in a way that resonates with them is one of the priorities right now. So we'll keep going, it is the first step in making many systemic changes for our students.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? So, I would like to say to Superintendent and to Chairperson Peretti, I did attend that School Committee meeting, and I want to thank you for meeting in person, so all those parents could come, because I think it would have been difficult, and I think it's harder to convey your feelings and all of that when you're just on WebEx, so thank you for that, everybody wore masks, and I think it was really important to them that they had each other there, but many staff showed up and some students spoke, so I was just really proud of the city that night, that really opened up that forum for everyone just to speak, and like Counselor Stumpel Ray has said, you have done so much since that day till now, and I just want to commend you, and, you know, I told you that night, and I still say it now, that if there's anything that we can do on the Council side, you know, let us know, but we will stay in our lane, you know, because we don't have any authority except for the money, but thank you for just the way that whole evening went, and I just know that parents were really happy, they were outside, and they just were very happy that they really did get to speak that way, and Counselor Bottomley, you know, he sent the first email commending the band, and, you know, I wanted to jump on the bandwagon and say, you know, that was great, and veterans were really happy and talking about it, and now the announcement about all the 54 band members and the instruments, it's just getting better and better, and that one thing, like band, is something that may keep a child in school and not drop out early, so thank you, and keep up all the good work. And Chairperson Peretti?
Thank you, President Rickett.
I don't want to go over you in case you want to speak.
No, I just wanted to, if there's no other questions, I just wanted to recognize you as well as Mayor Rita Gartner and her office, and all of the counselors who know who they are, who have reached out and communicated directly with the schools, you know, it turns out that the experts were right in spring of 2020, when they said, you know, when we send students and staff back into school in person, whenever that may be, they're going to have a tough time, and sure enough, that's exactly what's happening, and we're just very, very grateful for the support from the department heads and the mayor and the Council for what we need to do to help our students and our families through what is still a cliche, difficult time, and we welcome your communications directly to us at any point, as do the rest of the School Committee members, and we just thank you for sticking there with us while we move forward.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, and I did want to also mention to Counselor Jarvis, I know it's time suck, but if you ever can go out to GCTV and pull up the last School Committee meeting, that had a lot there, so you will learn a lot about what's going on, like I said, parents spoke, staff spoke, and students, and it was
Yeah, you know Penny, I would be, President Ricketts, I would be very remiss if I didn't also mention the very brave students that came and spoke directly to us at that meeting that night, and have spoken to Superintendent, as well as, if you haven't heard my nickname already, ASKP, Assistant Superintendent Karen Patnod, that's a mouthful, so she's ASKP, they've been working directly with many of the students, we are all hearing from them directly, I get a lowdown from Marina when I drive her to school every morning for the seven minutes it takes us to get there, and, you know, we want to hear from everyone, but hearing from students directly about their experiences is the best way that we can work through what's happening and make the experience a true, truly improved learning experience for everyone. So thank you all for your support again.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, so. Communications from the mayor's city officers and employees. And the mayor.
All right, thank you very much, and I too had the pleasure of marching in the Veterans Day Parade, and for a short period of time, behind the band, and they were wonderful, and it was a joy to see them even there at the presentation at Soldier's Memorial, so good on the band, good on the band director, it was, it was a great event, I was really happy to see all of the people that were there, not just at the Soldier's Memorial, but along the parade route, it felt really good, I know people were very disappointed last year when the Veteran Services Director canceled the parade, for likely, certainly he was concerned, so it's really great that we were able to do that this year, and it was, it was a real success, and I will acknowledge that for quite some time there, I joined State Representative Paul Mark for his last march as a state representative in the Greenfield Veterans Day Parade, so thank you, Representative Mark, for showing up on that afternoon, that was great. So, I have, I want to make sure, because Liz Gilman is on this evening, I want to make sure that I acknowledge Liz's retirement from the city of Greenfield, and the great appreciation that I certainly have had, being able to work alongside of her for this last nearly two years, I've learned so much from Finance Director Liz Gilman, and I suspect that's true for many of the counselors on the meeting this evening, and I do appreciate the fact that she is retiring and going to spend time with her grandchildren, just so that the city knows, and other, City Councilors rather, and other representatives or other residents here know, understand, Liz has graciously offered some of her spare time in retirement to continue working for the city on her DM rate, as we get through the budget season, this, you know, this coming year, so into FY23 budget, so, we haven't lost her forever, she'll just be speaking remotely from Indiana, so I hope you all join in wishing Liz Gilman a happy retirement. And, but with that, we've added a new staff member, and I want to introduce you this evening to Athena Bradley, our new grant writer, so Athena, if you want to, I'm not going to put you on the spot, because I forgot to mention to you today that I might ask you to say a couple of words, but if you want to just wave and let everybody know who you are, I'm excited to say that Athena just jumped right in, and she's working with Health Director Jennifer Hoffman on a $300,000 grant that Jennifer is looking to get for the city to amplify Health Department operations, so.
Good evening, everyone, thank you very much for having me, thank you mayor, and I am honored and thrilled to be working for the city, and I hope to be successful in bringing in lots of grant money, and reviewing all about the city, I've lived here before, don't live here now, but look forward to working here and being a vital part of your city and the community.
Thank you, thank you Athena, and next I will go to a question that I know that Counselor Wheeler is probably going to ask me, so I'm going to try to get ahead of it, and I'm certainly open to providing whatever details I can, if I haven't given him enough information, so Counselor Wheeler's concerns were about periodic inspections of the multifamily residents that we have in the city of Greenfield, and that is, I will say that what I'm about to tell you predates me, so some of it goes back to when Mayor Martin was in office, but I think Counselor Wheeler's concern was that for many reasons, we had all but stopped doing those regular periodic inspections, which the Building Inspections Department is responsible for under Mass General Law, so under Mass General Law, these inspections are required every five years at a minimum, and each municipality though can create their own procedures, so they could be as strict or more strict than the law, in this particular case, back in 2012, so that predates me, as mayor of Greenfield anyway, the building inspector and then Mayor Martin, with input from the Landlords Business Association and others, decided that the city of Greenfield's policy would be to do those inspections every three years. So the program itself was created around a three-year plan and was split into three groups, Group One would be buildings with eight-plus units, Group Two would be five-to-seven units, and Group Three would be three-to-four units, the program was on time until 2016, when a halftime position was cut from the budget. Since the budget cut, Commissioner Snow reports, they have of course struggled to stay current, and then as we know, in 2020, the pandemic hit, and they later lost alongside of that, basically a full-time building inspector, as Bill Ketchum left for, to go to work in another location, another community. another location, another community. So I'm happy to report this evening that they have offered a new job, a job to a new local inspector, and former local inspector Bill Ketchum is back with us on a part-time basis on Fridays. And that's not every Friday, but he has come back to help with not only this backlog, but a couple of other backlog. So that's the good news, and there's probably still better news. Commissioner Snow believes that once the new person is hired and trained, they can get back on time with the program. But the cycle is still three years, so it may take a while for them to get caught up. So we hope that you'll be patient with that. And he also plans to keep Mr. Ketchum on for as long as he can, support it within his current job. We will have Bill along with us. And I suspect that that means Commissioner Snow will probably be asking in his current, in his FY23 budget for an additional inspector. You know, more will be revealed there. So the program is statutorily required, and we certainly do intend to keep up with it as has been described. So just letting everyone on the council know that. And I'm going to go from there to something that I think has been on quite a few councilors' minds and certainly some citizens' minds. I did do a public presentation on ARPA, American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA, known by its acronym, ARPA, funding last month. And at the time, I did not, I only discussed the, you know, what ARPA was, how we might plan on spending it. And I did indicate at that time that I had not made any major decisions. As a little bit of background, we certainly, we received these funds in two payments. So the total on ARPA is some $5.1 million to the city of Greenfield to spend under the fairly rigid guidelines. It's an interesting, they're rigid but not rigid, in the sense that a lot of discretion is at Lout. But at the end of the day, we do have to report on the money like we do on any other federal grants. So I have received $2.9 million, which I have five years to spend. And in August, roughly July or August of 2022, we will receive the remaining balance of that, some to whatever it is. I didn't do the math tonight. And I am able to carry over any money from this year into the next year. So what I have decided to do so far is to, and I think this is my north star, so to speak, on ARPA spending, was as much as possible to spend the money in ways that would benefit as many people as possible in Greenfield. And also to keep in mind that there are many people affected by, and actually, many segments of the city of Greenfield government that were affected by ARPA, I am sorry, by COVID-19. So I have decided to, for now, and this could continue into the second tranche of money that will come in 2022, but for now, give $650,000 to GSET to complete the build-out of GSET, so that our neighbors who have not been able to get GSET yet, as a budgetary matter, as well as the fact that we were within the pandemic and they were not able to get into people's homes to set up GSET. So this will allow John to move into North Greenfield, I think is a priority for him. And he has some other things to other areas of Greenfield, but this will allow him primarily to move into North Greenfield. And I would invite you to have John come in and talk about his plans for expansion of GSET under the money that would be given to him through ARPA. So just, you know, put a pin on that and think about that for another meeting. I have also set aside, under this tranche of money, $100,000 for community assistance. And under community assistance, right now, I'm thinking primarily of some of the housing issues that we have. And to that end, I have authorized $24,000 to go to the Greenfield Housing Authority, so that they can continue a very important program at the Winslow House, which is a homeless shelter at the corner of Main and Wells Street. And it was, it's been there for quite a while. Goes back to when I chaired the planning board and we heard a presentation from them and approved the project. So under that program, they were supposed, under that program that was administered by the Greenfield Housing Authority, and I don't recall exactly what year it was, but it was some years ago, they were supposed to have a person on site from nine to five to assist the people who were sheltered in this house. I mean, they're actually living there. It provides 55 units of housing. They're small SRO rooms, single-room occupancy rooms in that building. And they are primarily geared to the chronically homeless. So in addition to having someone there nine to five, who could kind of monitor the residents, find out what their issues were, seek out help for them, it's called wraparound services, so that they could assess the people with the greatest need for mental health services, for addiction services and so forth. They were supposed to do that. And that was under a previous leadership of the Greenfield Housing Authority, and it really did fall by the wayside fairly quickly, and it simply became a shelter that they administered. And OIC MJ has joined us, and she may have a couple of things to add. Do that on the Winslow House if you want to, and you will allow it, President Ricketts. So what has transpired since Tom Guarino, now the Director of the Greenfield Housing Authority, has taken place is he has taken this on as a very important project to bring back, to make good on the original plan. And to that end, he entered into a contract earlier, late, well, yeah, earlier this year with Gamma, which is an organization out of Gardner, run by a gentleman who was formerly incarcerated, was able to come out and begin this program for the chronically homeless, many of whom were formal, are formerly incarcerated. And it's Gardner Area Mental Health Association. And I usually forget one of the Ms. or one of the As in there. Gardner Athol Area Mental Health Organization, Association. It's a really great group of people. They really do know what they were doing, and they've expanded into Greenfield to help Tom provide those wraparound services. So Tom has asked me to help with some ARPA money, and the greatest help that I could provide him right now was to be able to assist him in extending the Gamma contract through the end of this fiscal year, so till roughly the beginning of, with this funding. And I agreed to do that, and I will, through my communication with him, monitor how it goes and be happy to assist him some more with some of the ARPA money if I can. I feel like this is one of the greatest ways to help the Greenfield Housing Authority provide these services and also help us downtown, so that the people who need these services can access them and hopefully get their lives back together again and move on to more permanent I would also like to acknowledge that this particular program, I think, is really one of those programs that is a long-term program. And I wanted to do everything I could do to help the Greenfield Housing Authority on that. And lastly, I'm sure this will please Counselor Disorder, for sure. I have, I will set aside $200,000 for a Portland Lou. And for those of you who do not know what a Portland Lou is, it's a very fancy public toilet. And when I say very fancy, it really is. And I invite you to look it up. It's a very safe, very healthy, very easy-to-maintain public toilet, as opposed to our porta potties, basically. It utilizes city water and sewer. It is easy to maintain by our DPW. It is structured so that it provides privacy, but not so much privacy that people who use them can't get help if they need it. So and it's, you know, it's enclosed, but it's also open at the bottom and at the top. And it also discourages illegal activity. It has blue lights in it, so it's more difficult to use it for intravenous drug use. So we're hoping, and I, don't ask me where we're going to put it at this stage of the game, because we haven't arrived at a location. And when we do purchase it, prior to purchasing it, we will certainly get that set up, because I have been in communication with Director Marlo Warner about the fact that, you know, we have to make sure that there is public water and sewer available and that we can access it easily and keep the public water and sewer. So there are a couple of places I've identified downtown. We haven't gone into depth on whether that, whether they can actually be put there. The Energy Park would certainly be one of them. Some area close to the parking garage would be another. So that's all I have to say right now on ARPA, and I think that's the end of my report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want Liz to say something first, or no? Are you all set?
Well, if she wants to say something.
Oh, I thought you brought it up. Okay.
I did, I did, but I didn't know if she wanted to say farewell or-
I just would like to make a point that, you know, I've witnessed these past few years, all the tremendous effort put forth by councilors, you know, in an effort to promote positive change in Greenfield. And I hope everyone realizes the time involved for all your elected officials, including the mayor. And that I think when you look back on this period of time, these past few years, you'll see what a tremendous amount of change took place, and for the good, for the good. So I have enjoyed working with you all.
Okay. Thank you so much. Counselor Hirschfeld?
I have a couple of questions for the mayor concerning the number of DPW workers who were exposed to COVID-19. I'd like to know perhaps whether they were vaccinated and whether anyone was hospitalized. Hopefully, no one was hospitalized. Could you answer those questions?
It's HIPAA.
Well, okay. I was going to say the same thing, President Ricketts. I cannot answer those questions. I can- We certainly experienced some cases of COVID, almost like a cluster within the DPW. But the HIPAA rules around privacy and health issues prevents me from answering even what seems like, I am sure to you, a benign question. But it is not benign to the HIPAA rule. And I would love to be able to, I will tell you, what I will tell you is that as soon as it was determined that it was more than the one-off or the two-off, it has not been over the last two years unusual for those DPW workers, those public safety workers who have been in contact with the public, and by this, I mean our police officers, our fire officers, and our DPW workers, to experience COVID-19. Sometimes that was because of their work, and sometimes it was because, like a lot of people, they were out in the community in a way that, you know, there was no reason for them to think that they were going to get sick from it. So when we discovered that it was more than the one-off, but it affected, let's say, a cluster of DPW workers, again, something that's not terribly unusual in the grand scheme of COVID, for a group of coworkers to contract COVID-19. We immediately, the Health Department immediately began doing what the Health Department does, which is do the contact tracing, do the testing, do the quarantining and so forth. So yes, it has created a strain on the staffing of DPW to a significant extent. But I was happy to hear today that many of the workers are, who were infected or affected by this, are on the mend, and I will tell you that we do and have asked them to follow all of the protocols, COVID protocols that we have in place, which involves quarantining, involves testing before they come back to work, and so forth and so on. So that's what I can tell you, Counselor Hirschfeld and the rest of the councilors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are certainly very concerned for all of them, because, well, we know what, we know the toll that COVID has taken.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
I would just be remiss if I didn't speak to Director Gilman and thank her for her service. She came in at a time that was a little, I don't want to say chaotic, Liz, but it was a little crazy. And cool, calm, collected, very pragmatic, like she always is. She just kind of right steered the ship, didn't take any you-know-what and got us back on track. And it didn't matter if I was in the clerk's office at 9:00 AM when they opened or if I was the one to, I would, I did not close because it didn't matter if I was the last one to leave City Hall because her light would always be on. It would always be on. And so I'm retiring, retiring this year too. And so I get a little, a little choked up. But I just, I'd be so remiss, Liz, if I didn't tell you how much I appreciated all of the pep talks, all of the support, the hugs, the laughs, and frankly, all the honest conversations about, you say that the elected officials, you, just crunching numbers and figuring out the best pathway forward for this city. And I think no one understands what our department heads go through. We do not know everything sitting here as elected officials. We rely on everybody else to make these decisions. And if we're lucky enough, we have someone like Liz working for the city. And so thank you so much for everything you've taught me. And damn, you deserve a retirement. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And you and I can go off together in retirement bliss.
All right.
So don't think you've gotten rid of me yet, but I just had to say thank you so much. And it's going to be some big shoes to fill for sure.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay, any other councilors? Okay, Mayor, so I have a few things. So the first thing I want to say is I want to just thank you that the DPW was able, you know, the people who were well, to be out this weekend. I worked with the GBA to put up the decorations on Main Street and Federal Street. And thank you for the DPW and their trucks because there's no way I was going up those ladders. And I'm glad they brought some bucket trucks. And even when they, we needed the ladder, I still chose to hold it down at the bottom. But I just want to thank you for that because working with all those guys was great. And they were really productive and we got done a lot more in one weekend. The next thing I wanted to bring up was the L.L. Bean boot. Although I didn't have time to shop and stuff, I saw all the foot traffic downtown. And so that worked out very well. I think it helped a lot of other businesses, most likely, because there was just constant people coming. And you could hear them talking about it, you know, as they walked by me. I do want to say that it was really good that the Veterans Day Parade was back again. It was very important to those veterans. They were so excited when we were at the middle school. And I was happy to march with my fellow councilors, Disorder Bottomley and Mayo. But they were glad to be able to march again and not have to sit that out. And it turned out to be a great day and stuff. So yeah, it made a difference to a lot of people. And I just want to say to Liz, yes, I'm going to miss you very much. You have taught me a lot in the seven years that I've been here. You've worked well with us. Even though council keeps changing and you remain the same, you know, numbers don't lie. You're there. You just keep us on task. And I just want to thank you for everything. And I want to thank you for your patience, definitely for your patience. You do well, and just like now, where you do that smile and laugh, I know inside you're like, come on. But thank you. Thank you so much for everything. I do want to switch it now, Mayor, to our clerk's office, who once again hit it out of the park with an election. Another election season amid COVID. And I don't know if you have time to ever go down there that often, but they did a great job, a wonderful job. A couple of the people who won that election are on tonight. And so I want to welcome them and thank you. And we will work together, checks and balances. And I think it's going to be great. And on the question one, you know, the noes were the ones who took that. So it will not come back to appointments and ordinances from, because there's nothing to change. It's, everything's going to remain the same. So it was great that we live in this democracy where we may not agree, but the council did the right thing by putting it out for a vote. And then we stand behind what the majority of the city wanted. And so I just want to bring that up about our clerk's office. And then lastly, I'll let you speak to it a little bit and then I'll let Clerk Scott, is the redistricting. And I know that you have been talking and probably not yelling, but being very sweet and respectful and smiling. But again, inside you are going crazy. But I just want to thank you for all you're trying to do to protect Greenfield from this restrict, redistricting. But if you want to speak to that for a moment and then the clerk, maybe you can explain what they think they're doing.
I will be happy to do that, President Ricketts. I, well, the good news is we have more legislators in Greenfield than we know what to do with. Until, until Representative Mark steps aside because he is in fact running for Senator in a completely different district. So we will lose him on the one hand, but he has assured me that when the time comes, his heart will always be with Greenfield. So we may not, I may not be able to reach out to him in the same way that I reach out to Senator Commerford, but, but he will be there for us when we need it. And we do have him for a little while longer. So, and I was happy to welcome both Representative Natalie Blase and Representative Susanna Whipps in my office over the last couple of weeks. We've had, actually about the last three weeks, we've had great conversations. I do know that they are anxious to get started working for the city of Greenfield. They have certainly Susanna Whipps, representative Whipps from the Gardner-Athol area has already started. I wish, and I think you all know, that this had not happened, that the city of Greenfield had not been split into two legislative districts. It has never, ever happened in our history. It is not unusual, I have come to learn. The town of Belcher Town was split for quite some time. Chickopee, I think, has been split for a long time. It's bigger, city of Chickopee and so forth. But it was rather, I will use very blunt language, ridiculous to think that a city, that is what we are, of 17,000 people would be split into two districts. And I did everything I could and I mustered as much legislative support as I could. But redistricting, apparently, and Kathy will speak to that, I'm sure, whatever you allow her to, is apparently sacrosanct. And we don't, we do not mess with the redistricting committee. Whatever they say is what they say, unfortunately. Now, that's certainly apparently true out here. So it is what it is. And when the time comes in the very near future, both Representative Blay and Representative Whipps will be available in the community. We hope to do some sort of public welcome of them with them around the first of the year. And everyone will have an opportunity to come and meet them in a very public way. So just know that I'm committed, as I said to them and as I said to the redistricting committee, I am mayor of Greenfield and I have to represent all of Greenfield. And I want them to help me represent all of Greenfield, not just the districts, the precincts that they are going to represent. I know that Kathy has been working this week with State to try to figure out what the heck they were thinking when they did whatever they did with the precincts. I can't speak to that. I left that one to her. So I'm going to let her take care of that one for you. But just know that on behalf of all of the citizens of Greenfield, I will keep our two representatives very close and represent us in the best way that I possibly can or have them represent us in the best way that they possibly can by constantly communicating with them. And I would encourage each and every one of you councilors to do the same. So, and if there's anything I can do, President Ricketts and other councilors between now and the first of the year to get them in front of you, I'd be happy to facilitate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Clerk Scott? We talked earlier about this, so she's going to, she's going to smile a lot so it comes out nice.
She's taking a deep breath or two.
Yes.
So I reached out to the Census Division through the Secretary of State's office last week in an attempt to, you know, find out the next step because of our recent re-precing thing that Greenfield did and then the redistricting that the legislature did. The news I received was a surprise to me. When the legislature voted to split Greenfield, they used the 2010 precinct map, not the 2020 precinct. So in terms of talking about split precincts, it's easier for me to tell you the number of precincts that would not be affected than the ones that will be affected. Precincts one, two, and five are the precincts that would not be affected. Everything else would be a split precinct. I'm not going to trouble you with my initial reaction or my words in the few hours after that. I think you might be able to imagine it if you've ever had a conversation with me off the record. So what I did was I reached back out to the Census Division because the governor has signed an allowance that if a community that has split precincts or was split district, if they want to again review their precinct map to maybe align it because the legislature will not change theirs, it falls on us. If we wanted to look at our map again, we have the opportunity. I reached out to the state Census folks and asked them to look at our precincts one more time to follow the line that the legislature used to split the community, which was the 2010 precinct line. I can try to pull it up and share it with you. But I'm trying to keep it quick here. So they are working on a new map for us, which if the council wishes to consider re-preasing things of Greenfield again, there would be two concerns for me. One would be not to have split precincts. And the other would be to ensure that councilors who will be taking office or remaining in office on January 1st in individual precincts would remain as that precinct representative. The Census Division at the Secretary of State's office said, mm, call order. And I said, well, you told me to tell you what we wanted. And, you know, I conferred with the mayor's office and Danny and I've been keeping President Ricketts up to date. So if the council is amenable to once again looking at our local precincts, I would like to do that. We have until December 15th, which happens to be the council meeting. But the December 15th deadline is the deadline for communities to notify the state of their new precinct boundaries. So because of that, we would possibly need to have a special council meeting. Yes, you're hearing it out of my lips. I never thought I would ask for one. But if the council is willing and interested to do that, I would like to work with the state to get a new precincts map. Meanwhile, keeping everyone that's going to be in office on January 1st, 2022 in their respective precincts and following the legislative split so that we do not have split precincts. The reason I would not like to have split precincts is if we do have them, we need to buy additional election machines, voting machines. We would need to, and that's, that's a big cost. And I'm getting a little bit farther than I wanted to do. But I, I was hoping that the council would be able to tonight give me the yes mod to continue to work with the Census Division through the Secretary of State's office to attempt to correct this issue, which we did not create.
Yes. Since it's not on the agenda, can we still vote? Can we roll call vote it or?
I don't even, I don't, if I may, I'm sorry, I don't think that, so it's not really, I'm not asking for a vote to be able to do it. I'm asking you to.
Nod.
Allow me to work towards that.
Yep.
So that we, we could get a new map, we could look at our precincts, do the best we can do to create a good scenario for Greenfield so that the precincts, yes, precincts are going to change. Yes, people are going to be in a new precinct on January 1st. I can't tell you who, I can't tell you how many right now. The last map looked pretty darn good to me because it only moved about 1,000 people. This, I would imagine, would be a larger group of people who would be put into a new precinct. But at least people in that one precinct would be in that one precinct for both local and state elections. They wouldn't have to worry about if they're in precinct one for a local election and then in the state elections, 1A or 1B or 2A or 2B. So I think it would be a wise idea to at least look and see what the Census Secretary of State's office could help us do.
Okay, great. That would be perfect. Counselor Stempel Ray and then Counselor Gilmore.
I just, Penny, President.
The mayor did have her hand up. I just wanted to let you know.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead. I didn't see you. You're muted, I think.
I didn't do it.
I know you didn't. I know you didn't. I don't want, I don't want to interfere with your ability to make that decision or not. But I'm, I'm available to discuss it with you, President Ricketts and Vice President Gilmore. As you know by charter, I can call a special meeting. So if that's what's needed and you need me to do it, I'm happy to do it. But I don't want to go against whatever you folks decide you want to do with regard to taking care of business so that the meeting on the 15th isn't. so that the meeting on the 15th isn't impacted by this.
Well, along those lines, I was thinking, while we're thinking about the special meeting, I think we were thinking about we may need a second meeting anyway for the Recreation Department. So this might work out, because didn't they need to have two meetings in December? For first and second readings?
Yes. They just need to have the contract signed by the end of December, yes.
Okay.
And there are a few things that have to happen in the meantime by the council.
Right, and so.
That would require two readings, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Right, and it had to be on different days. So that's why I'm thinking, okay, we gotta work with the clerk's office and let's figure this out because Director Moore said we needed to have two meetings in December to get this done by the end of December. So let's just tie it all together. All right, so we'll talk about that tomorrow. And then, yes, it will be Counselor Stempel Ray, then Counselor Gilmore. And then we will do public comment tonight, everyone. So make a little bit more popcorn and we'll be right with you. Okay, go ahead.
Something quick. You inspired and reminded me of something that I wanted to say. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Greenfield High School Student Council for quote unquote "fluffing" the garland for downtown decorations this year. They spent a Sunday of their time, which getting young adults back into school activities on a Sunday, it's hard. Who wants to go to work on a Sunday? So I just wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged for their work. And I hope they enjoy looking at the decorations that they helped come to fruition. That's all.
Thank you so much. Glad they were there. Okay. Counselor Gilmore.
Yes, I just wanted to say to Clerk Scott that I recognize all of the hard work that you do and I would never, ever want to be saddled with your job. I am 110% in favor of doing a special meeting if this is gonna make your life easier and if it's going to make things better for Greenfield. But I do have a question. If we aren't able to come up with a solution right away in December, does that mean that the last map is gonna stand? Or is there some other recourse? I just, I remember I had called the Secretary of the Commonwealth when we were talking about re-precincting before, and they were talking about some different avenues. But since we've already approved one map, I'm curious what happens if we don't find something right away.
Good questions, Sheila. It's my understanding that because the governor has allowed communities like ours to go back and revisit our re-precincting map because of legislative split, that with the assistance of the Census Division at the Secretary of State's office, we will probably be able to come up with a better solution for our precincts than we have currently. And by currently, I mean the map that you all approved last month. But I don't have, I don't have a concrete answer for you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, if we have to take the soft line, I'm happy to talk to you at some point. But I just want to know that you have my full support. I just want to make sure that we have all bases covered.
Thank you so much.
What I would like at this time is to have the council agree to potentially have a second, excuse me, a special meeting on the night of committee chairs on December 7th because there will already be a few people attending a meeting and it makes sense to have it, you know, when there already is a meeting. But, you know, all I can ask for is, again, the nod to say, yes, proceed and see what can be drummed up.
Okay, it's fine. Do it. You do you. You got it.
And when everyone is done with the re-precincting questions, I do have one more topic that I wanted to touch base with you on, but I don't wanna.
Please. No, go ahead, Counsel, yeah, Counselor Scott. I would not wish that on you. Clerk Scott.
So if anyone tried to log into the Ways and Means meeting last night, there were some issues logging in. And I know the council has decided to meet virtually for the time being that is allowed by law to happen until April 2022. If it is the will of the council or if anyone would like to have a conversation about going back to in-person meetings, we in the Clerk Council Office had thought that if in-person meetings were to occur and people went back to the John Donne Community Center, we could use the Plexiglas that we have for the elections that we put in front of the poll workers so that they are separated from the residents when they come to vote. We could use that to provide some barriers for councilors to make it a little bit more comfortable, all while using safety precautions. You know, you wouldn't probably be six feet apart, but there would be partitions between you, you know, masks to be worn. So we wanted to offer our thought on that if anyone wanted to begin a conversation again. That's all I wanted to mention to everyone.
Thank you so much. I just feel like it's long overdue. I've attempted many times to go back in person and I saw how well it worked at school committee and then how many students and parents really liked that and wanted to be there. And there's just some meetings that really need to be in person. So thank you for that and you can put that on the chair's agenda for next minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Unless anyone else has any questions for the clerk, we will move on. Okay, public comment. Glenn Ayers. And thank you for your patience.
President Ricketts?
Yes.
There was a gentleman who signed up very early on in the meeting who resided at 32 High Street.
Yep, let me go up to the top then. Yep, I'm down too far. Let me find it. Hold on.
It's Jesus?
Okay, yes.
I don't wanna try to pronounce his name. I'm sorry, last name.
I still haven't found it, but I know who it is. Okay, Jesus, you can go first and then Glenn Ayers. Okay, go ahead, Jesus.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I'm here to address the City Council and requesting the City Council contact the State Attorney General's office on behalf of tenants and neighbors that have previously filed complaints with the city against Theodore Burrell's rental business. I've contacted a number of different councilors about this issue and certainly I know that some councilors have seen the public records requests that demonstrate why this was actually an appropriate action for a long time. And it's something that I did actually directly request of the mayor in an in-person meeting and in writing after that meeting about three months ago. I am not really sure why I didn't get a response from her on that particular question, but it's something that the State Attorney General's office has done and is currently doing. One case that I sent to the City Council through an email to all the councilors was from Lynn, Mass., where the Commonwealth took a landlord to court on behalf of the city and tenants who were dealing with a nasty landlord in that city. Again, I think this is something that the city really needs to consider doing. Housing code compliance is a very basic function of the city government. And while city departments have exhaustively responded to complaints around Burrell over the last 20 years, it has still not changed the way he manages his rental properties. And it affects tenants and it affects neighbors. And it's something that has specifically upended my life long after the city attempted to address any one given violation or issue. That's, I guess, all I have to say. Please contact me if there are any questions as to why I'm making this request.
Thank you so much, Jesus. Okay, Glenn Ayers, could you say your name and address?
Yeah, hi, my name is Glenn Ayers. I live at 254 Davis Street. President Ricketts and councilors, thank you very much for this opportunity to provide public comments. I'm the retired regional health agent with FERCOG. I retired three years ago. I worked there for 12 years. And I'm currently a registered sanitarian and certified health officer. But in 1980, I started working for the state of Pennsylvania in the hazardous waste site cleanup program and emergency response to hazardous waste spills. And I have a background in understanding the toxicology of hazardous waste sites. And while at FERCOG, I also work peripherally with the brownfields program there. And so tonight I wanted to address you because I've been asked by more than one counselor on my opinion of the Lunt Field situation and the brownfields cleanup there. And so I have reviewed some of the documentation. If you go to the MassDEP website for Lunt, there are literally hundreds of documents constituting many thousands of pages. And I have not reviewed all of that, but I have reviewed the most recent information pertaining to Lunt. And the site is currently highly contaminated. It is a highly contaminated brown site. It's contaminated with TCE, trichloroethylene, which is a carcinogenic solvent, chlorinated solvent. And that contamination is moving off-site. It has contaminated residences on Forest and also on Kenwood. It is also leaking into a storm drain and exiting the property that way. But there is a gross amount of TCE contamination there. It's highly contaminated. And yet I have not heard that the Board of Health has issued an opinion on this cleanup. It is actually the Board of Health, Health Department's jurisdiction for hazardous waste sites. And I have not heard that they've offered their opinion on this, and I think that they should. But I think prior to the town's disposition of that site, any property transfers or sale of that site, there should be an effort by the council to conduct due diligence on it. And I believe that you should exercise your oversight responsibilities that are allowed to you under the Charter, Section 2-7, where you can hold a hearing and look at this matter, call in experts to review the situation and really to understand the liability for this contamination. There are some things that are very, from my expertise, very unusual, very strange, fishy, I would say is the word for it. You know, why are the standards that are being used on this property for evaluation the commercial industrial standards? And why aren't the residential standards being used? Because this is a residential treatment facility. And why were people allowed to enter that building and inhabit it while it was highly contaminated and while there was intrusion of TCE into the building? You know, that to me is very questionable. So I believe that the council should look into this matter, conduct a hearing on it, review the information, have the Board of Health review it or bring in some outside experts to explain the situation to you and to get an answer for why the site was not cleaned up properly, especially considering that it is currently residential use, which has a much higher cleanup standard. So that's my public comment. I'd be happy to answer any questions at any time in the future if you do elect to take a closer look at this matter. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ayers, and thanks for waiting. Thanks for your patience. Okay, is there anybody else from the public at this time that would like to speak? You put your name in the chat box? Or, let's see, if you're on by phone, you could just speak up.
There are a few people who signed in, President Ricketts. One is Pamela Goodman. Goodwin, excuse me.
Yep, okay, I see now. And so Pamela Goodwin, your name and your address, and then Clarissa Clifford.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street. Thanks for this opportunity for public comment. I'm thrilled to hear about the Portland Louvre, so I want to thank the mayor in making a decision because I'm one of the active people who talks about that from time to time. So I'm happy about that. I'm on the Housing Greenfield, gave ourselves a name, Housing Greenfield, dealing with homeless, long-term, short-term. I'm very concerned how cold it is at night now for people who don't have a roof over their head. And we have a meeting tomorrow night. And the last time we had a meeting, we were asked, some of us said we would come to City Council and say that we really like to see, two years from now, the temporary fire station could be used, that area could be used for housing because we need housing for homeless to be near public transportation. You know, people who don't have cars can get around if they're in the downtown area. I believe it was Counselor Dolan, but I could have the wrong name who wanted to propose that. And so I'm just gonna be the squeaky wheel because we don't want people to forget about that, even though it sounds like it's way down the pipe. In terms of the fire station, I'm a little concerned. Well, I'm one of those people who are looking at this proposed amazing architect. And so I'm a small-town person from a small New England area. And so I am hoping that people will take a closer look at that. When I look at the old courthouse and then I look at this huge, fantastic addition to it, again, it doesn't stay with the downtown atmosphere. Sorry, the small-town New England thing. But, you know, what's done is done and I think it's good for us to think about, you know, who are we and what do we want to affect, you know, the ambiance. I'll use that word of the town. So I want to bring up the fact that the emergency area, when we have a problem, it becomes the Zon Center. So for many, many months, you know, in the height of COVID, it was the command center for the police and the EMTs, the fire. And so I'm hoping that people are taking a look at this brand-new proposal and can use a command center or make a space for it because I know why we couldn't use the former one. I think it was in the basement of the fire station. It was not good when I investigated because the seniors in this town do lose a lot of time at the senior center. We are thrilled that it's open, that it's not giving vaccines, for example. That was another reason why it was shut down when we could have been over there having activities, masking up or whatever. And I went over and had a live lunch today and it was delightful. People have said, I'm not coming for the meal. I'm coming because I need socialization. So I'm just putting that bug in someone's ear. I haven't made the attempt anymore except made a couple of calls to a few councilors. I would love to see more money going for homelessness. I think it's a huge issue. And I'm glad to hear that some of that money will be going to Greenfield Housing and they're working on that. But the other money... But the other money that's coming, I'm hoping is going to be put forth at some point. Maybe I'll either investigate on my own time or see another article in the paper about where else we're going to house people. And I know that some temporary immediate housing, I could be wrong. I wish I had saved the article in the paper, but I share my paper with friends here. I believe the John Oliver Station might be open so that people can get warm and have facilities during these freezing cold temperatures. I already had heard that a hotel who was using vouchers last year was not willing to do that for this year. And we, those of us who are working on the immediate housing concern, there's an opioid task force that we are coupled with in terms of nobody, nobody perished last, I hate to use that word, nobody passed last year from being cold. The previous year, we know there, there was unfortunately some situations. So I just always want, and I know it's a concern for all of us anyway, but I'm, I spend a lot of time about housing. I live in public housing, just got elected for a state official on the board for Massachusetts Union Public Housing, and will be trekking down to Dorchester when we meet live. So I guess that's all I want to say, and I thank you because I know you guys work really, really hard. And I haven't seen M J Items in a long time, and I loved a meeting that I attended, and I found all kinds of questions answered. So I have to figure out what committee that was, and then I'll show up for that one sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, Clarissa Clifford, your name and address? It's really choppy, I'm sorry.
Try taking off your video.
Yeah, now speak. Yep. Nope, I'm sorry. I'm not able to hear you. I'm sorry. Are you still there? You can put your video back on so I can see you, but I cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I took off my earbuds.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, so I was reading the agenda in the minutes. I wasn't able to be at the last meeting. And I was really kind of shocked to hear about the contamination at the Lunt property. And mostly for the concern for the nurses, I'm a nurse, that the last testing wasn't done has been since 2019. And so I'm really concerned for the health of those people working there and, and living there. And I just was wondering, and if, I, I then watched the next Health Department meeting, and I didn't hear anything about it. So I just was wondering if we can make it sort of an emergent priority to make sure that those, that the people that work there and live there are safe. And that was basically it. I want to thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Wendy Goodman, name and address?
Hi, Wendy Goodman, 529 Green River Road in Greenfield. First, like kudos to you all for hanging in there with all of this, especially this precinct division re, I, I just, thank you. Thank you for managing it. And Kathy, I think you're amazing. I really came because I was concerned, and I didn't know much, but I was concerned about the Lunt property and the contamination. And it just felt like it was moving on quickly without us really doing due diligence. So the reason I wanted to go at the end was because I was hoping to learn more. And Glenn, thank you so much. He's gone. No, he's not. Because listening to you, I, it, it put some more context around it. I just, you know, my concern is typically how we're functioning as a town. And I look at this as something that we need to be responsible to, for all of the current impacts, but moreover, to really consider what we are passing on. And to be able to step up to the plate and say, this is who we are. We're going to deal with stuff. We're not just going to pass it on. So that's what I hope that we can do is look at this, do due diligence, understand really what we're looking at, have it be an open conversation. Glenn is, we are so lucky to have you, that, you know, we've got an expertise. Let's, let's move with our integrity and say we aren't just gonna deal with the financial situation that this brings, but we're going to do the right thing. And I don't know at this point what that right thing is. I just don't feel that we've done enough work to understand what that right thing is. And I would like us not to think about the next five, 10, even 20 years, but to think about the next 50, next 100. Thank you. Thank you, all of you, for all the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to thank everybody for their patience and for waiting, and I'd like to close the public comment. Okay, so moving on. It is the public hearing second reading. Madam Clerk, did you want to speak before this?
Yep, I'm here. Thank you. Could you remind me of the topic?
Okay, so this is for the second reading, for the payment, for the Baker's invoice, so.
Oh, yes. So, thank you for turning that light bulb on for me.
Okay, I thought I was going crazy. I am, but thanks.
My suggestion, so the order that is before the council, which is on page?
Thirty-four, right? Or no?
I'm gonna get there in one second. So the public hearing and the second reading should still occur because it has been published.
Okay.
The order that is on page 45 requires a vote of nine tenths of the council, which is 12 members need to vote positively to pay this bill. There are not enough councilors here tonight to vote on this issue. So my recommendation would be for the council to, by unanimous consent, hold the public hearing and the second reading this evening and put this motion for consideration either on the special council meeting, which may occur on December 7th, or on the next regular council meeting on December 5th.
Okay, so you want us to read, read it tonight, the public hearing, right?
The public hearing and the second reading should occur this evening, but the vote should go on an agenda in December, depending on what meetings will be held in December.
Okay, so on page 34, Counselor Bottomley, can you read that public hearing? Or anybody who's already on that page already?
I've got it up.
Perfect. Wow. Do I know you, or do I know you?
This is the public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, at 6:30 PM at John Zon Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via Webex. To receive public input on the following, $115.50 payment of Baker's invoice from fiscal year 22 Human Resources Department budget. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, at 6:30 PM at John Zon Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via Webex if required. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Benny Ricketts, Greenfield City Council President. City Council's second reading, November 17th, 2021. $115.50 payment of Baker's invoice from fiscal year 22 Human Resources Department budget.
Okay. Is, is that, is somebody on council speaking, or is that just?
I had muted because I was going to move to table, and then my son started screaming at his stepfather. My apologies.
Oh, okay, so you.
They're playing. It's okay. I just wanted to make a motion to table until December.
Well, we, could, could we close this public hearing? We, we just opened the public hearing. So can we close this public hearing at 8:11 PM? 8:11 PM. Okay, so Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, I moved that we table this item until December.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Elmer.
Okay. All in favor? You want to do a roll call vote? Madam Clerk?
Counselor General.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Do we have to wait till we get to it in the docket before we do a?
For the second reading? That's what I thought. It was down further.
It is down further in the agenda, so I, I didn't know. Just a point of order.
Yes. Yeah, for the second reading at the end of the night? Okay, let's, let's see if it matters. Thank you for that.
No, I can, I can withdraw my motion if that's the case. I think that Counselor Travis might be right.
All right, so the public hearing's been open and closed, so we got that done. Okay, so we'll wait for the rest till we get down. And Counselor Bottomley's got us covered for that. All right. So, number 10, order withdrawn by the mayor, November 3rd, 2021. Okay, so it's come to my attention, well, all of our attention, that this came to us inadvertently that the council has no work to do on this. And so at this time, we really don't need to take this from the table in that, since the original motion was inappropriately brought before the council, and it has been withdrawn, without objection, I'm removing the original motion from council's consideration. So I know that there are some concerns about the health and safety conditions of the property that were brought up at that last council meeting, and we've heard some tonight as well. So those concerns and all those questions should be directed directly to the mayor or to the potential purchaser of that property.
I object. Is, President Ricketts?
Yes.
I, I object. I'm not sure that that actually is out of our purview. So I know that.
It could be taken from the table, but it would have to be the people who tabled it. And if we're going to bring it back, that would be Counselor Gwen, I believe.
I'm sorry, I think, like, I, I think that we can take it from the table. If Counselor Gwen isn't present, that would, I mean, that would kind of be a catch-22.
Okay, Mr. Roberts, what should happen now?
Okay.
It has been withdrawn. It's been withdrawn for quite some time, so go ahead.
It no longer, it no longer exists.
It does not.
You can't take from the table a motion that has been withdrawn. It's muddy.
Oh, I object because I would say that this.
Counselor Gilmore, first of all, you put your name in the chat, and could you put your volume way down or something? Because you keep yelling. All right, so if you put your name in the chat, I can call on you. Okay. Okay. So it'll be Counselor Gilmore and then Counselor Bottomley. Okay. So ask your question, Vice President.
I would say that it has not been withdrawn by a member of this body.
Okay, Mr. Roberts?
Well, that is correct. I'm trying to remember. I don't have my notes in front of me. Who made the original motion in front of the, at the council meeting? Who moved to accept it as a motion?
President?
Counselor DeSorger?
I, I made the motion.
All right. Then, then you're, you're, you're correct, Vice President Gilmore. Counsel, Counsel Disorder could move to have her motion withdrawn. Or she could move to take it from the table. However, the motion itself strike, I, I believe the motion itself is probably moot, given the fact that the mayor has said the council has, that it is not in the purview of the council. That legal counsel has said it's not in the purview of the city council.
Right, so we can take it from the table, but there's, it's not something we really can move on. Okay, so let's see if people have questions for you, Mr. Roberts. Counselor Bottomley?
Yeah, I'm concerned that, first of all, this did come to the council, and I think we should take it from the table to discuss it because I also think we should seek independent legal counsel because I'm not sure about the mayor's reasoning for withdrawing it. And it did come to the council, so I think the council does bear responsibility to discuss this. And I think we should get independent legal counsel on this issue.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes, I agree. I think we definitely need legal counsel on this. And, you know, the, the city is, is really the only agency that really can ask either federal or state money to clean up a site. And I think leading this to the Liberty Agency is, is really poor on our part. And it also having, it, it's a moral impairment that we really clean up the site and make sure that no one's health is affected by this. This is really horrendous that this has been going on for so long. I, I've, I've worked with, I've worked near this stuff, and it's really bad. It's, it's not something you really want to play around with. So I, I believe that we should do it right. We should not just try and pass this thing along to another agency, which really can't afford to, to deal with it. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Counselor Dolan, then the mayor, and then Will Roberts.
Just a quick process comment.
Yes.
I mean, having been down this road before, the council has no recourse to independent legal counsel. The town attorney is the town attorney. We don't have a budget line. We don't have a contract. So I'm afraid, but we, we made some strides to address this a few years ago, but it did not. So I'm afraid, but we, we made some strides to address this a few years ago, but, um, it did not hit through. But the town attorney is the only resource that we have on this, unfortunately.
Thank you. Okay, so it could be the mayor, then, um, Will Roberts, and then back to Counselor De Sorga. Okay, Mayor?
Yeah, okay, I just had to unmute, so, um, the reason I both MJ and I are on here this evening to speak to this if we need to at this time. I'm gonna continue speaking, but, uh, it'll be up to you whether you want to hear from MJ or not. Much of this predates me, but I have, of course, been brought up to date on it. The, um, city council passed, voted, um, to enter into an agreement with this company, uh, to purchase this property. And they have a contract, so I'm appealing to the counselors to understand, uh, about legal contracts. So it has come to pass now that, um, that contract is, uh, before the city of Green, of Greenfield to execute the sale. Prior to that, quite some time ago, and some of you will remember, some of you may have been on the council at the time. The city of Greenfield took the property, the lump property, um, in a tax-taking. Uh, and therefore, the city of Greenfield was allowed to enter, to sell the property without council approval. And that is what happened. And, um, in addition to that, the city of Greenfield was required, um, to, uh, also, and the, the timeline on that may have preceded the actual tax-taking, but the city of Greenfield, I think they were more, uh, tangential than they were, um, one, and then two. The city of Greenfield was also required to, uh, clean up as the, as the now owner of the property. Uh, the city of Greenfield was also required to clean it up, the environmental pollution. They did so through the help of several, uh, and substantial brownfields grants. It's actually a model, um, for how to use brown, how to clean up brownfields. Going back some, some years now. So, the cleanup has been ongoing for several years. We do have, we, the city of Greenfield, do have a licensed site professional on the property, uh, on the case, on this particular case, who does revisit it as required by law. And has, uh, those inspections occur, if I'm not mistaken, every four years. And, uh, they are ongoing. So what needs to be done environmentally has been done and is being done on a regular basis. And that's, that is just the way it is. It was, uh, and I will take that responsibility, as I said in my memo, when I asked for the, when I withdrew this motion. I inadvertently put it on the last city council's, uh, agenda. And, but that was a mistake because of what I just indicated, which was that the city, uh, was allowed to sell this property to four oh one Liberty Street LLC, uh, under a tax-taking. At the same time, they were also involved in cleaning it up, so, um, that is why I, uh, withdrew the motion, because it really isn't, at the end of the day, in your purview. Is it in your purview to be concerned? Yes, um, as it is mine. But, um, I do know that, um, the property is ongoing, and the inspections are ongoing, and the state is involved, as they need to be, in how it gets cleaned up and how it gets used. So, um, the sale of that property is proceeding. And the city of Greenfield, should it decide through the council, try to, um, interrupt that sale, I think would be held quite liable for it. So, uh, I'm just making that statement here this evening. And, um, if, um, you want to ask MJ to entertain some, or to give you some additional information that she may have, uh, I'm happy to have you do that, if you're willing to have that happen, but that's, this request was simply to, uh, withdraw the motion, and, um, I'm asking that you do that this evening to avoid, to allow this sale to go forward, which releases the city of Greenfield from any of its liability. And it also, um, allows a project to go forward, that, at the end of the day, has cleaned up a property that could have sat abandoned and, um, unused, and not bringing us the revenue that it does bring us, so, um, that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, I know I have three more counselors who signed right up, but it-
Why don't you let, why don't you let the counselor speak first, and then I'll, I'll, I'll try to bring my minimal understanding to it.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Counselor De Sorga, Counselor Bottomley, Counselor Hirschfeld, so go ahead, Counselor De Sorga.
I would like to speak first to the legality of taking this out of our purview. The argument being that we didn't have anything to do with the sale of the property to begin with. In two thousand and fourteen, this was one, this was one parcel divided into three. The city council authorized in May of two thousand and fourteen, um, the purchase of one part. We authorized the sale of, um, we authorized the city in two thousand and fourteen also, you could see in the meeting minutes, Part B. But, and I do understand the law on tax-exempt, that actually the mayor has a right, I believe, to sell tax-exempt property, perhaps without council approval. However, um, this was one condominium, and we actually have bought part, part of C S O was purchased from four oh one Liberty, who had purchased, purchased it from S and W Realty. That happened on December of two thousand and seventeen, I have the deeds in front of me. And so I know, Will Roberts, that you were consulted, it sounds like during this time period.
Right.
So I'm first, I'm first gonna go to that and say that it, it's a very complicated issue, and I think that we have some liability in this also, we're gonna be asked to vote on an S T A on that. I understand, because I've read that contract thoroughly, that it is a lease, um, with a, a lease option. I can see on the very front page of the lease op, option, on page one, where, um, we are telling the tenant that we will take back three hundred, any money that they didn't spend in remediation, which I find highly unusual, that they did not spend the full amount on remediation, that was the EPA estimated that it was gonna be over a million, and they left over three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And, and I, I don't know who, who wrote that lease, but at any rate, I understand that, that something has to be done, and that at some time, we do have to, because we have an agreement, we do, we're supposed to sell it to them, but we don't have to sell it to them now. That lease is, is overdue. It was, um, I think it's probably by a year. But in addition to that, um, Will, if you are our parliamentarian, that deed is not at all clear. In two thousand and eighteen, I went to the registry of deeds, because the former mayor had said that we didn't actually buy some of that, and he printed me out every deed, and I have them in my possession. And it was because I was a member of planning board, and we were doing what I would call expedited permitting. We, we gave a permit for B H N, the first one, and that was fine. We had a public hearing, and we welcomed all the neighbors, and we all voted on that, and knew exactly what we were voted on. And then when C S O came before us, they told us that that was an extension of a special permit, which there really isn't such a thing. We were extending that, we put in ten more beds, and the last fifty-five beds, which is a, which is a residential, I think it's a thirty-day stay, fifty-five beds, we didn't even have a public hearing on it. And procedures were not-
Point of order, there is no motion on the table. I would request a motion on the table.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, um, Counselor Wheeler, is that you that's saying that?
I would just request that a motion either be made, withdrawn, so that discussion may proceed, we should not, under Roberts' rules-
Be going on as a story, I agree. Yes. So, Counselor De Sorga, do you want to make your motion?
I, I move to bring this back to the table. I move to put this back to the table.
It's-
I second that. That's an appropriate motion.
Would someone please clarify who seconded the motion?
Counselor Bottomley.
Thank you, yes, everyone, people, people are talking tonight. Okay, Counselor, okay, so, the motion is to take it from the table?
Correct.
Okay.
It is a non-debatable motion.
Okay. And so we want to take it from the table for discussion. So, if we vote yes, we discuss it, if we vote no, it just stays on the table, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, I would. No.
Give me just one second, please.
Yep.
Six counselors voted yes, four counselors voted no. Parliamentarian Roberts, would you say that that was a majority that is taken off the table?
It is off the table.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so discussion? So, put your name, okay. Whoops, so Counselor Elmer, okay, Bottomley, all right, you're in there three times, um, so let me do Counselor Stempel Ray, then Bottomley, then De Sorga, so if, if you guys, while you're waiting for a speak, could you just don't keep putting your name in over and over again, I do see it.
I think, um, Counselor Elmer was before me.
Okay, Counselor Elmer, Stempel, Bottomley, De Sorga, and try not to put it in the minute you hear something that makes you want to talk again, okay? Go ahead, Elmer.
Thank you. My problem is that we have two conflicting versions of what the situation is. We have the mayor saying that the town has cleaned it up, and we have, uh, an expert who, uh, who spoke today saying that it isn't. And we have, uh, Counselor De Sorga, uh, quite explicitly, uh, saying that it hasn't been cleaned up. I, I'm not sure how we get to the, to the bottom of this, uh, but it seems like that's the problem we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Stempel Ray?
Uh, Counselor Elmer outlined it very well, um, there's no getting to an answer or a solution on this council floor tonight. We're kinda kicking the can down the road here, folks. So I suggest, yeah, this is important, and this is a matter that maybe having all of those who know something speak in one room, and it's not gonna be here, and it's not gonna be now. So I'd like to propose that we put this back to committee, so we can have a robust conversation, bring the right people to the table versus everybody sharing their opinion tonight.
Okay, Counselor Bottomley?
I do want to say we're talking about people's opinions, that's not necessarily true. We've had access to huge reports from the EPA, you can get on the EPA website and see that air quality analysis were done, I can quote, it says exceeded the residential, residential imminent hazard concentration of T C E. So the site is not remediated according to the EPA. And furthermore, I'm extremely disappointed with the mayor's office specifically, that they have not taken an active role in demanding the full and proper remediation of this site. So I don't think we should be selling any property that could risk people's health. So that's where I'm at, but these documents are available to the entire council. Counselor De Sorga has highlighted specific tests from the EPA and sent them to the entire council. So it's there for people to read, that's a fact, that's not my opinion. That's all I have to say on this issue.
Thank you, Counselor De Sorga.
I, I, I just wanted to also say that, that I do have the latest report from the EPA. The latest thing, O T O sends in reports which are done for them, okay? And, but the latest thing from the EPA clearly states that the site contaminants impacting indoor air are still present, so that I think is not a debatable, the fact. But beyond that, whether or not this is within our purview, we were asked to put this into a straw deed in March. That was the, I don't know if now the straw deed would be invalid, because we were asked incorrectly. But we own and bought part of that, part of C S O because we needed it, so it, it wasn't all from tax-taking. We purchased it, and I think, Will Roberts, those deeds need to be looked at before you make a, a statement that it is not within our purview.
Okay, um, so I believe it's the mayor speak, was there somebody before the mayor, was it MJ, or no?
I think I, I was on the chat. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I was on the council, uh, when this whole, uh, uh, lump property came up. And through the remediation and cleanup, we were guaranteed, we were told, that it was cleaned up. And I'm really surprised that, uh, we would, uh, try and-
And I'm really surprised that we would try and hand this off to another entity that involves, you know, people living there and call it a commercial property. I think that's really a misnomer. We are, I think we are, we have to really clean it up. And we have to get it tested to make sure it's cleaned up for the future of all those residents who are going to live there and work there. We... It's our duty as a council and as a city to make sure it's clean. And to not do so is horrendous. Why would we say it's clean and have people's lives at stake? And say, well, that's your problem? I mean, that's horrendous. And I really, I really question what's going on. I want this to be open. I want it to be public. And I want it cleaned up or remediated so it doesn't affect people's health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny?
Yes. I heard my name. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's Will.
Thank you.
In my imperfect parliamentarian role, I see two issues here. One's procedural and one's moral. Procedural is my purview in this council. And I would rule where I ask that this is an appropriate motion for the council to consider. That Counselor Disorga is correct. And it's messy. But it is an appropriate motion to take the issue from the table. It's an appropriate issue for the council to discuss and make motions upon. You are absolutely free to overrule me. I'm just, that's just me saying that with unlimited parliamentary expertise.
No.
But it is an appropriate motion and you can consider.
Okay, so we can read the order and vote on them, right, now? Because we've already taken it from the table. We are discussing it.
You don't, you can do what you will with it. The motion was made, the motion is independent of the mayor's office at this point. Because the council has accepted it and tabled it and now taken it off the table.
Okay. So no, that's, I was saying, at this point, do we just reread the initial order and vote on those?
You do what you will.
Okay.
You discuss it, you make other motions, you vote whatever is appropriate to the body.
Okay, all right. All right, and so we can, so they can make amendments to the order?
The floor is open.
Okay. All right, so does anyone else? All right, let me do Counselor Dolan and then the mayor. I think I have one more City of Greenfield, but I'm not sure. Okay, go ahead.
So I would like to admit, I don't have a clear sense of exactly what's going on in this case or where the truth lies. I feel like I'm always coming into this conversation in the middle when it's already happening. And there's a lot of context that I may have missed. Documentation is often, like today, set at the very last minute. And sometimes what's claimed about that documentation doesn't quite match the documentation itself. So I don't know. This is beyond my technical expertise. And I would like to do a process around this because it is important that does not involve just discussing it in the context of this motion, which I think we're all pretty clear is not going to do anything.
Right.
So like, I would like some clarity and a clear process from the council leadership for how we can address this in a way that's meaningful rather than in this context. And if it comes through, then I will abstain.
Okay, so I will have to say that I agree. We're just going to go back and forth all night and we're not really going to get anywhere and we can vote it. But it's wrong. I agree, it should just go back to EDC and let them make the appropriate amendments for it because maybe they're going to keep all the wordings that's there and legally find out if they can put in some words like, you know, based on the certification of EPA cleanup or something. You know, because we're here, I don't know if the recorder's on, so I'm sure this will be news. And so the people that are working there now, and I hope to God with all this talking, I don't mean I don't hope it's true, but this is, could start something huge. And everyone who works there now can probably do lawsuits based on this conversation alone. And so I'm just saying is that, yeah, if EDC wants to take it back and change the wording to add in what they would really like to see in there, because they're saying all the proof is not there that it has been cleaned up, you know, correctly. And I don't know if the people purchasing it, I don't know if they did due diligence or they just buying it without doing it themselves either. Those are things I don't even know. So I say that this goes to EDC to hash out and that we only do have our council legal person. So this is a contract and we're in a contract with them. And I don't know how much our personal legal counsel can tell us about what we're doing. And if we put the city at financial risk with our decision, how does that fall on? You know, maybe those people do know what's going on here. Maybe wrongly, they're using it knowing all of this. I don't know this. So that's all I can say because I don't know legally how we do it without it hitting us in a financial state or multiple lawsuits from employees that are hearing about this. I mean, I didn't think all that through because I didn't know we were going to get in the conversation this deep. But I'm sure with the media listening and stuff, this is serious enough. Yes, that this could be going on all this time. But, you know, do we know if the people who currently are there, are they aware of it? Were they aware of it all this time? And so it could be yes. I don't know either. So the only thing I can say is that it goes to EDC and they work on what they would like it to say. But it would be good if there could be one or two people from EDC that could sit down with the mayor and MJ and work on this. Because if not, then we're just going to be right back here again. Each month is going back and forth and back and forth. But if everybody could just sit down and discuss it, because at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want to know that that property is clean. We want to make the sale. We want the tax money from it. We want the same thing, but can we work together on it? Or are we just going to butt heads and not get anywhere? So that is all I can say. And so I think it's up to the Chair of EDC now to say whether this is something that she can do and sit down and work with the city and figure this all out with the Board of Health, with the mayor's office, with MJ. Or you're going to close ranks and just do EDC and bring it back to council and still it's not going to help the rest of us because we're not privy to all...
Madam President, if I may?
Who's just said that?
Counselor Jarvis.
Okay, Counselor Jarvis.
I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to committee.
President Ricketts, I believe you asked me to speak next.
Okay, and then Counselor Jarvis, I did hear that and I will circle right back to you. Mayor Wiedenberger?
Thank you and thank you, Ed. I want to take issue with Counselor Bottomley's concern that I have not taken an active role. Two years ago, I took, as did many of you and prior to that, some of you others, an oath to follow the Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Massachusetts and Mass. general law. So prior to my arrival, under Mass. general law, the City of Greenfield entered into a brownfields grant to clean this property up. Cleaning a property up that was as contaminated as this property doesn't happen overnight and then it gets pronounced clean. There is a long and legal process that allows that to happen. And none of us here this evening have a full understanding of what that is. I suppose probably the person who does most is Planning Director Eric Torog because he has been in it from the beginning. But currently, this property is operating under a, what they call an AUL. It's an authorized use. It is a legal process through the EPA and the Mass. DEP that allows the use of the property as it has been designated as a commercial property to go forward. That authorized use language travels with it to whoever the owner will be in the future. Those inspections, if I'm not mistaken, every four years. I think the last one was in 2019. And it was agreed in 2019 by the EPA and our LSP that what needed to be done was being done. So I think Counselor Stempel is correct. There isn't really anything tonight that any of us can do absent the discussion that's going on. As I said, I do take issue with the fact somehow or other, I'm not concerned about the property itself or how it's being used. That is not the case. What I am concerned with is following the law, which I am required to do and which you are required to do. So we do have an LSP. If at some point we need to confer with him, then we can certainly do that. But I don't think that it can be said that the City of Greenfield has not followed what they were required to do several years ago on this property because they have been. And that includes me because, as I just said, I am required to follow the law.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis, Disorga, Wheeler?
At this time, I would like to make a motion to send this back to committee for further review. Thank you.
Do we have a second from anyone?
Don't they?
Second, Stempel.
Okay.
President Ricketts?
Yes. Clerk Scott.
May I point to clarification and maybe add a recommendation? And Counselor Jarvis, was your order to send this one order back to committee? Because I think if they're going to both be sent back to committee, there should be individual motions to send them back to committee.
Okay, I thought we were only working on the one order.
We are.
Okay.
But if this one does get sent back to committee, then I would think the second order should be followed.
Got you. I got it because it's two parts, exactly. A1 and A2 get sent back to committee. Thank you for that clarification, Kathy, on that.
Okay. So this order that you proposed was for order number FY 22027A1 to go back to committee for further review and recommendations? Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Disorga, did you want to say?
I think that what Counselor Dolan said about just bantering this about and was very worthwhile. And I appreciate Counselor Jarvis saying back to committee. But if this is coming back to the committee that I'm the Chair of, I would request that we have other people present, including maybe somebody from OTO and Glen Ayers and the Board of Health person. Under those circumstances, if I can choose the people that will be coming to that meeting because there are varying views on that. And secondly, the authorization of use is not done. That is not completed according to the OTO, but they are not the EPA. And the third thing I wanted to say that was that following Mass. general law, we have an obligation to. Chapter 21E, if the city undertakes the responsibility for this site, we must achieve and maintain a permanent solution. So there's a lot of different ways that we can look at the law and that's one that we have to abide by. I'm happy to take it back to committee, but we need more experts than the five of us bantering this about because it will be the same. And I'm not sure that that can happen, when that can happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, Counselor Disorga, I did say in my long speech that if it did go back, that I did want it to go back with other people at the table. I wanted the Board of Health and Liz, the mayor, you know, the OTO, I didn't know about, but that too. But that was everything that I had just explained, that yes, if it goes back, I think everybody has to be at the table because it's not going to make any sense to go back to five people who don't totally know it all and it just come right back to council and we get nowhere. So, yes. Counselor Wheeler? And then Counselor Stempel? Okay, yeah, I got it. Go ahead, Counselor Wheeler.
Oh, my comment was irrelevant at this point. I think let's continue with the conversation.
Okay, Counselor Stempel Ray?
Thank you. I just, I mean no disrespect when I say this, so I won't precursify that. But that is the job of the Chair of a subcommittee to ensure that the right people are at the table for a conversation that is being had. And so, Counselor, I'm happy to support you bringing those right people to the table. But that's kind of, that's kind of what bringing it back to committee will entail, is making sure that the right people are at the table. And this is something that we tried to alleviate last year was the back and forth ping-ponging of discussion with no end, so to speak. And I heard Counselor Bottomley get offended. And I heard Counselor Bottomley get offended when I said opinions. And I wasn't digging at anybody, but it is all opinion until we can find a solution. I'm not saying that the research is opinion, I'm not saying. But when I hear I like and I think and we're not getting anywhere, and this body needs to be more structured so that we can make good, sound decisions together. And so I absolutely, 100% believe that this needs to go back to committee. And maybe it's in conjunction with the Planning Board, but absolutely do we need to have more structured conversation to come to a solution so that when it comes to this body, all 13 of us, we can have a conversation that comes to an end with engaging with the Mayor? And I think, I thank the Mayor for hanging in there and contributing to this conversation. So that's all I'm trying to say. Not trying to offend anybody, but we're going back to our 2018 council where all we do is talk, and we're not coming to a solution tonight because the right people aren't here for us to do that. So let's bring it back to committee. Counselor Jarvis agreed to follow the recommendation of the clerk, and I will stop talking.
Okay, so the only thing I do want to say about all this is I think everyone really is on the same page. I don't think it's really differing. The thing that we cannot do is just make the final decision. But I think we're all pretty much on the same track. And Counselor de Sorger has sent lots of information and done lots of research. So as far as all the facts and stuff come into play, we do have lots of that. So we just need to have a couple more people at the table to speak to it and to explain it all. So at this time, I'd like the clerk to take a roll call that says that we send both pieces back to the table? And do you want us to do it in two different votes?
Yes, the motion on the floor currently is to send the first order back to committee for discussion and review.
Only the first order? And then we'll, and then we'll make a motion for the second order? Okay, so for the first order?
Counselor Jarvis, to forward back to committee.
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor de Sorger?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Donlan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes, it will be forwarded back to committee.
Okay. Now, somebody want to make a motion for the second one?
So moved, Gilmore.
Oh, oh no, I was just asking, sorry, I didn't make it. But you want to do it? Okay, Gilmore?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Point of order. I believe we have to take that from the table before any motion to the committee can be made.
Fair enough. I move that we take it from the table.
Thank you.
Second, Elmer.
And now I move that we send this back to EDC.
Take it from the table first, please. There needs to be a vote, sorry.
We just have to vote, but thank you.
Clerk, is saying it enough for the record?
Say it one more time.
Is saying it enough for the record, or is it your preference that it's read into record?
The preference is always that it be read into record.
I didn't know if Vice President Gilmore wanted to actually read it into record.
Sure, let me get to the page. I was looking at the cover sheet there.
Okay, no problem.
It's on page 35, it's the second motion on the page.
Yes. I am on page 32, give me a second. 35.
Or if anybody else is there?
Yeah, someone gets there before me. I am.
If you want me to.
I have it.
Perfect. The City Council move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY22-027A2, vote to authorize the Mayor to sell 294 through 296 Federal Street units located in the 298 Federal Street building based on, based on City of Greenfield's standard operating procedure policy on sale, lease, or option of city-owned land, which was tabled at the October 20th, 2021 City Council meeting.
Second, Gilmore.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any comment or questions?
I will move that we, I would like to move that we send this to EDC.
President Ricketts?
From the table first.
Okay.
We need a roll call vote to take this from the table.
Right. Yep.
Would you like me to do that now?
Please, go ahead, yep.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor de Sorger?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Donlan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you.
Now would be the time, if anyone wanted to make a motion to send this back to committee, now would be the time for that motion to be made.
Okay. I, I will move that we send this back to committee.
I'll second that, Gilmore.
Okay, it's been made, second in. Any questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor de Sorger?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Donlan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes, I'm muted.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion is made and sent back to committee.
Thank you. So will you make sure this gets on committee chairs? Not sure. I will speak with Counselor de Sorger tomorrow, and then we could figure out if it is in fact going to be December or January, or the 12th and ever, you know, whatever date comes first. Okay, but yeah, we'll work on that, because I don't want to now put all that pressure on and we got to do it in a couple weeks, so. Especially if we have to get certain amount of people to the table and it is December. Okay, thank you. So next. We are on page 38, and who's going to do this? Is Counselor Jarvis?
I could read it, but I wasn't at that meeting because I was out of state.
Okay, that's right, and Counselor Gilmore was out. I was there and.
Yeah, again, I'm happy to read it, if you want me to read it.
Perfect.
I'm on. Sorry, my page in Google Docs is different than what I'm seeing here. Okay, so. So it's labeled as 38, and in Google Docs, I'm seeing something different. Okay, I see it. So move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments and reappointment by the Mayor. Sarah Ehren Bellamere, Public Library Board of Trustees, term expires June 30th, 2023, and David Singer, Zoning Board of Appeals, term expires December 31st, 2024.
I'll second that, Elmer.
Okay, and Counselor Elmer, you were at that meeting, correct?
Yes, I can report that these, it's Susan, by the way, Bellamere, that these both got positive recommendations, unanimous positives.
Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor de Sorger?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Donlan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
It's breaking up, but I think it's my turn, yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we are on page 44. For whomever would like to read that from.
I have it. The City Council move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council affirms the following appointment by the Mayor to the Board of Assessors, Jim Geisman, for a term to expire December 31st, 2021.
Second, de Sorger. Thank you. Counselor Phil.
I don't remember this one.
Okay, it was a positive unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any questions, comments?
Counselor Stempel is in the chat, she would like to.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, I just, I just wanted to speak to Jim's character, and I'm just so thrilled that he's stepping up and taking an active role in this city, because he has been so smart on the sidelines for so long. I've enjoyed meeting with him and talking about all his aspirations and how much he loves the community. So, so great to see Mr. Geisman on the board, and Greenfield will be lucky to have him.
Thank you so much. Okay, so could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor de Sorger?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Donlan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
President Ricketts?
Yes, yes.
The motion passes. If I may for a moment?
I'm getting.
Whoa, go ahead.
This, this next motion is a motion that requires a nine-tenth majority of the full council. 12 votes would be required. President Ricketts, if you were to ask and receive without an objection the council approval, this could just be put on the next council meeting agenda without needing to be moved and tabled.
Okay, yeah, so I would, I would like this to go on the December committee chairs. Do I have any objections from anyone?
The special meeting that may be on December committee chairs meeting?
I'm just going to say, yeah, next month. I haven't forgotten, we might have that special meeting, yep.
Yes.
So perfect. Okay. All right.
The next motion is on page 48.
Okay, so this next part is going to be more difficult, because I left the meeting, because I had another meeting, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please, because whatever it is, you're going to either have to do it all, or it's getting all tabled.
Yeah, the, I think we're at a bit of a disadvantage. These are complicated charter questions, and the Chairman of the Committee is not here to represent the decisions that were made at A&amp;O. And I wonder if we could punt this to the next meeting?
Yes, because Counselor Forgé actually did the majority of these.
Yeah, I was second that motion. I wasn't able to even review the meeting, because I've been so busy, and I felt very bad about that. I would love to take this up next month, when we can do a better job.
Okay, and so, and I totally agree, like I said, Counselor Forgé did the bulk of all of this. And so I really want her there to explain it, and also Mr. Singer was in the room. Wait a minute. Counselor Wheeler, were you at this meeting?
I apologize, Madam Chair, but I was only at the beginning of the meeting. I had to leave in the middle, sorry.
Me too. Okay, yes.
Would you like, do you want me to make a motion that we push this to the next meeting?
Counselor Donlan has a comment in the chat.
Okay, yes, Counselor Donlan.
Just wanted to mention Gwen did ask me to present these. I feel more or less ready to do them. They're, they're really kind of very deep housekeeping. But I'm also, I would be, I may not do it as well as he would, so if folks want to defer to the next meeting.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot that you were there. Please, if you can do this, because you know what, I'd rather get these off of our plate, because we keep talking about these, and if you remember the rationale, we're all set.
Well, why don't we try one and see how it goes?
Okay.
Would you like me to read the motion?
Yep, starting on 48. Okay.
About the Greenfield City Charter, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 3, Executive Branch, Section 3-1, Mayor Qualifications, Term of Office Compensation be amended as indicated below with bold text, to be added and strike-through text to be removed. So we're cutting the existing compensation section and replacing it with the simple language. City Council shall by ordinance establish annual salary for the Mayor, which shall become effective immediately. I believe that the committee was unanimous on this. I don't have the notes. I'm not really certain of that. And basically, the rationale for this was the charter is not actually a great place to set the salary for the Mayor, because it is more difficult to change. So the Charter Committee recommended several options. What we eventually decided to do was just set that the City Council can set the salary by ordinance, and then at some point, we'll have to push through an ordinance to actually do that. There are several models, and they need deeper discussion, but this would kind of open the door for that later on, to make it more flexible.
Okay. Perfect. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this?
I'll second the motion.
First, okay, second the motion, yep. Is that what you were waving to me for, Madam Clerk?
Partially.
Okay.
So yes, thank you for the second on the motion. And Counselor Donlan did a great job summarizing what the changes would be. Um, and Counselor Dolan did a great job summarizing what the changes would be, but if the last part of the motion could be read, it is a charter change. Um, we do need to have that language in there.
Okay.
Do you want me to start at Section C or, uh, below the actual changes?
Um, so you indicated the change in Section C and you said that Section D would be stricken as shown. If you could read the last couple of lines in capitals, that would be great.
Sure thing, sorry if I got carried away. Um, and that the City Council further instructs the City Clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter. Oh yeah, that part's important.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. Roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Dan.
Was that abstained?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Herschel.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Dolan, I loved it, so do it again.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article Three, Executive, Section three dash eight, temporary absence of the mayor, A, acting mayor to be amended as indicated below with bold text to be added and strike through text to be removed. Section three dash eight, temporary absence of the mayor. A, acting mayor, the mayor shall by a letter filed with the City Council and be filed with the City Clerk designated qualified city officer or city employee to exercise powers and perform the duties of the office during temporary absence of mayor for periods of less than, uh, we're inserting fifteen business days and to serve only when this needs of the city require and only to the extent necessary under the, under the then circumstances. Whenever by reason of sickness, absence from the city or other cause, the mayor shall be unable to perform the duties of the office for a period of, we're inserting fifteen successive business days or more, the president of the City Council shall be acting, be the acting mayor. In the event of the absence or disability of the president of the City Council, the vice president of the City Council shall serve as the acting mayor. And the mayor's qualified, this section is added, the mayor's qualified city officer or city employee designee shall assist the acting mayor in their duties of the office during the absence or disability of the mayor. And that the City Council further instructs the City Clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second Jarvis.
Okay. Made and seconded, any questions, comments? Roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Herschel.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Counselor Dolan?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article Three, Executive, Section three dash nine, vacancy in office of mayor, B, council election be amended as indicated below with bold text to be added. Section three dash nine, vacancy in office of mayor. Council election, if a vacancy in the office of mayor occurs in the last nine months of the term for which the mayor is elected, whether by reason of death, resignation, removal from office, or otherwise, the president of the City Council shall become the mayor. Upon the qualification of the president of the City Council as the mayor, under this section, a vacancy, vacancy shall exist on the City Council, which shall be filled in the manner provided in Section two dash eleven. In the event the city ca, city, in the event the council president or vice president shall vacate their office for any reason prior to the end of their term of office, at the next regularly scheduled meeting after such vacating and prior to conducting business, the council shall elect from among its members a successor president or vice president to serve for the remainder of the term. And that the City Council further instructs the City Clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Seconded, Elmer.
Yes.
Made and seconded.
Made and seconded, thank you, any questions or comments? Okay. A roll call vote. I'm so sorry, I brought a smoothie home and I can't find where I put it. Okay, go ahead.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Herschel.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Right, and unmute, yes.
Thank you. Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Counselor Dolan?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article Five, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, Section five dash two, School Committee Budget, A, Public Hearing, be amended as indicated below with bold text to be added. Um, I won't read the whole thing, basically where the change indicated, um, just says that we will publish announcements on the city website in addition to in the newspaper, so just updating this for the times. Um, and for Kathy, and that the City Council further instructs the City Clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request the legislature to amend the city charter.
Seconded, Elmer.
The motions have been made and seconded.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Herschel.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Counselor Dolan?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article Five, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, Section five dash three, Submission of Budget and Budget Message be amended as indicated below with bold text to be added. Um, this is exactly the same thing, but in a different section, just adding that things may publish on the website. And that the City Council further instructs the City Clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Seconded, Elmer.
Okay, it's been made and seconded, questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Herschel.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Counselor Dolan?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article Five, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, Section five dash seven, supplemental, supplementary budgets, other appropriations be amended as indicated below with bold text to be added. We are literally adding an and that was omitted, uh, by error in the first version. Um, and that the City Council further instructs the City Clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Seconded Jarvis.
Okay, made, seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Herschel.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray.
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. First reading on page fifty-six, Counsel Disorder or Counselor Bottomley?
President Rickett.
Oh, what?
Um, there are a couple of agenda items that you bumped over, one being the presentation of petitions or similar papers.
I mean, right. Okay, does anybody have anything? Um, and does anybody want to give a report from their committee? Nope. And unfinished business?
Um.
Old business? I can't see you all, so you'll have to either start talking or put your name in. Does somebody have old business?
No.
Oh, I thought somebody talked, sorry, my fault. All right. So, new business? Okay, so before we do that first reading, Counselor Bottomley or Counselor Disorder? Yes.
Sheila Gilmore had some new business.
Okay, go ahead.
I can't wait till after the first reading. I was just going to say we have a resident who spoke a public comment and has emailed the council. I wanted to bring up that topic, but we can do the first reading first as more of a housekeeping issue.
Wait, um, brought up a topic, is it on the agenda or what, what?
Well, no, that's why I was, that's why I was bringing it up under new business is because it's not on the agenda.
Um, for committee chairs next month, are you bringing it up or?
We, we can do that, but let's go ahead and do the first reading first and then we can discuss that.
Okay. Go ahead, who wants to do it? Counselor Disorder or Counselor Bottomley?
I can, I can take that.
Okay.
Um, City Council, first reading, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, transfer thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars from contract stabilization for central maintenance union contract wage provisions and approve one thousand seven hundred dollars for payment of invoices from KP Law from fiscal year twenty-two, Energy Department budget.
Thank you so much. Counselor Gilmore, I mean, turn my volume down first, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so all of us have received an email. I'm sorry.
Is she on?
Do you hear me?
Are you muted or?
I'm not on mute, do you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay. So all of us received an email from one of our residents. This person has been in touch with several.
Sorry, Counselor Gilmore, are you muted?
I'm, I'm not.
I, I can hear her.
Penny, can you hear me? Penny, can you hear me? It's Kathy.
Make sure she's still on, right?
I'm still here.
We can hear her, Penny.
We can, we can. Counselor Gilmore, your mic is open. Could I not?
Okay, so we have a resident who has contacted several different city counselors. I've spoken to them on the phone and via email over several months, uh, possibly over a year. Um, who has asked us to file with the Attorney General. Um, I don't know what the mayor's intention is. I, I, I feel like she's, she's not inclined to do that, but I don't know if she's changed her mind. She hasn't indicated whether she will do that or not, but I think that that's something that should come up on committee chairs. Um, if she's not going to file, um, um, something with the Attorney General's office, I think we should talk about it because I, I feel like this shouldn't be ignored.
Okay, all right. So we're going to put this on committee chairs and which committee is this going to go to?
I think when we're talking about tenant landlord relationships, I feel like EDC may be the most appropriate committee, but that's me just pulling this out of the air.
Okay.
I'm happy to.
Committee chairs, point of order.
That would be fine. I would be happy to decide it at committee chairs.
Okay, perfect. All right. Anyone else under new business? Okay, so at this time, I would like to wish all the council, all the residents, the city of Greenfield, to have a nice Thanksgiving. And at the time that you are still enjoying all of this with maybe family and friends, stay as safe as possible and think about neighbors and people around you who will not be having what you have on your table at all. So anything that you can do or give during this time will be really greatly appreciated and think about it as, you know, you're turning your heat up right now and just kind of bundling up because it's cold. That it's not like that for everyone, so during this time of Thanksgiving, let's give some thanks and some thoughts to everyone in our community. Okay? At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Elmer.
Seconded Disorder. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great holiday. Good night.